Sure.
Welcome everyone to the Remote Commission Work Session of October 4, 2021 here at the Port of Olympia. The port is working diligently to address the threat posed by COVID-19 to Thurston County, the state of Washington and the United States. On March 16, 2020, the commission adopted Resolution 2020-03 authorizing certain emergency powers in light of the COVID-19 outbreak, including invoking emergency exemptions to meeting notice requirements on location restrictions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Pursuant to that resolution, the Port of Olympia Commission is conducting today's meeting remotely. Board is following the guidance from Thurston County Health Department to take all efforts to prevent the spread of this virus and is acting in the interest of the safety and welfare of the public, the community, and our employees to limit its spread. So with that, a motion to approve today's agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 As have it, we have an agenda and the first item on the agenda is the 2022 Draft Port Operating Budget and Capital Investment Plan Advisory. Sam Gibbey is presenting, welcome Sam.
Thank you Commissioner and before we get started today, I just want to let the commission know that we have a couple members of our leadership team that are hoping to join us that are having some internet connection problems. Jenny just informed me that there are some social media networks out etcetera, so there seems to be some kind of disturbance happening on a rather large scale, but I'm glad all of you could connect. And if we need to change the arrangement of slides, waiting for some directors come in, I might ask for your forbearance in doing that. So as we get started today, I wanted to let you know that we have on the call with us or in the meeting here, Matt Peach, who is the Senior Administrative Services Manager. He is also our budget officer and he will be doing the bulk of the presentation today. I also have members of our leadership team, they will be making presentations of several slides as we go along as well. We also talked with, I spoke with Commissioner Downing earlier and as we move through the presentation, I think probably the most effective way to do this is that we will kind of pause at the end of each kind of business unit or section, see if we, the commission has questions along the way rather than holding everything towards the end, but also not asking questions about about every slide until we were able to give you the full context of the the business unit. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So this is.
Can I interrupt for a second? Can I interrupt for a second, Sam? Sorry. I meant to mention this to my fellow commissioners of the so I think we have two hours slated for today's meeting, so depending on the pace of how it goes. As Sam mentioned, there's two or three natural breakpoints in the presentation. Are my fellow commissioners okay with the holding your questions to each breakpoint and then we'll have questions addressed at that time.
I like our executive director's suggestion that we address questions after each business unit or natural break. So I would second Sam's suggestion.
That's fine. I think I could go along with that. If Sam is suggesting that we do it at those planned breaks, then that's that's what we should do.
Thank you Commissioners, please go ahead, Sam.
Great, thank you. So today is the first presentation of the preparation of the draft budget as prepared by staff. And I like, I frequently refer to this as the first presentation as an orientation. It's really to reacquaint everybody with the organization and outline of the budget as well as the the assumptions and thinking and kind of strategy that that goes in behind the the creation and this has been, you know, weeks and weeks of preparation on staff's part to then be bringing it to the commission for for your your consideration. You will have many opportunities, both you and the public to continue to ask questions and have discussion about this budget. This is certainly the not not the last time you will. So that's why I refer to it as an orientation, going to get everybody knowing where where things are and then we certainly expect several iterations of a discussion about this as we move forward in the coming weeks. So the agenda for today is to look at the budget from an overall perspective, including our portwide strategic initiatives, our overall funding strategy, strategy and statutory budget and then go through the budget business line by by business line and including departments such as environmental and and GNA. So in each of the businesses that we will be looking at their particular strategic initiatives, their overview, their budget assumptions, user rates and fees and challenges that they see for coming up in 2022. Go to the next slide. We then will look at GNA which and how that gets allocated out to the other, the operating units as well as public works and and planning and communication, marketing and government affairs. Our non-operating budget includes environmental, the commission budget and other non-operating expenses. We will only be taking a very, very brief look at the capital investment plan today. We will touch on some of the highlighted projects there as well as give you a very brief glimpse at the overall budget. However, we have time reserved for our next meeting on October 18th or our next work session on October 18th to be going over the capital investment plan in more detail. We'll finally then touch briefly on the budget schedule and timelines and of course, we'll be leaving questions for questions and comments along the way as well as anything towards the end. Next slide. So for our assumptions, what we're really, and we we talked about this in our session back in early September about what the priorities of the commission were and how the the staff really continues to to try to align with the the priorities as we understand them. And what we're really trying to do is for for next year to create the resources for us to then implement a or create a very detailed five-year plan so that we can really create that alignment between the the commission and and the staff and then be able to line up our resources accordingly. Our assumptions for going into the operating budget next year is we're looking at an increase of revenues of eight percent. An increase of our gross operating income of 4.6%. We are looking at no increase overall in FTEs of of staff with a 3.1% merit pool. And then of course, and you will see this repeated as as we talked about our priorities early in September, is that this all will be taken in the context of this continued response to the global pandemic and the economic disruption that is created by that. Next slide. We have, we'll be continuing some of the strategic investments that have been carried over from past years. We do have proposed capital investments of over $2.7 million. That does account for nearly 900,000 or 861,000 in presumed grant funds. Some of those we have been awarded all already or have been notified of of award. Some we are awaiting whether or not we will receive grant funds. So there are some projects that are contingent upon the receipt of grant funds. And when we get to that capital budget, we'll talk in detail about that. Then looking at using port funds or cash that we, our cash balance of 1.9 million to to fund these capital improvements. Next slide. So again, that the overall strategic initiatives that we're looking at is this creation of five-year strategic strategic plan within an annual action plan that can come out of it. And you know, we've, we've talked about this on a couple different occasions and then have drawn upon the recommendations of Mal Foster and Alangi that as we hope to develop a more strategic budgeting process here in the coming years. Part of our efforts too are to create this integrated port peninsula development plan. This is drawing directly on the work of both Vision 2050 as well as the Destination Waterfront. And this is really, this exercise is not not nearly so much about what are the community priorities things, but really how do we make sure that we're we're literally on the same page and that we're we're starting to look at where things will actually fit, where utilities are etcetera. So this is going to be a lot of kind of preliminary engineering and work that's internal to the organization. We'll continue to place an emphasis on our unified maintenance approach. We continue to see great cost effectiveness from from using this and really think that you know, this this last year, we kind of just got that off the ground and continue to hope to see a really good value for for the port and and for the public by using this approach. And then last but certainly not not least of continuing our steps to actually bring forward more steps towards climate resilience. That includes not just participating in the planning efforts that we have done thus far, like for sea level rise etcetera, but really how do we move forward pretty boldly with some conversions of our fleet to renewable energy sources etcetera. And then again, once again, all of this is taking place in in the context of this continuous response and I'm just going to emphasize that over and over again, I think it is sometimes very easy for us to forget that that is happening and and yet and kind of expect things to happen on a normal pace and a normal rhythm. And supply chains are disrupted. It's difficult to get some some types of of labor and trade work etcetera. So it affects everything from our capital projects down to, you know, how much staff, time and resources have to be diverted into responding to the 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 needs of the pandemic just on our own staff level. Next slide. This is one of the very high, high level that we'll take a look at for today at the capital improvement plan budget. Our our annual budget for for next year, this is not exhaustive of all the projects on there, but it is some of the 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 most prominent ones. Continuing with developing the Marine Center Building, which will be home to both our administrative offices, our Marina Office as well as some mission-driven and nonprofit organizations. Looking at the RV Resort, continuing forth with design and permitting for that. We do hope to design and permit our shared maintenance facility for this coming year. We have some grant-funded marine terminal paving on 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 the plan that that would be dependent upon us receiving the the grant funding and then just the last, at the last meeting, the cybersecurity and infrastructure project, which will be bringing back to you for your approval at the next meeting. And that is, that that is scheduled and we have been notified that we will be awarded that those grant funds and then, you know, seeking your your approval at the next meeting. Next slide. And I am now going to turn it over to Matt Peach.
Good afternoon Commissioners, I'm going to review the 2022 statutory budget. Next slide, please. We've included the 2021 column just for comparison purposes, but I really want to focus on the 2021 projected ending cash as that flows up into our 2022 beginning cash. So that was is 12.6 million. We have operating revenues of 14.4 million, operating expenses of 12 million. For our net funds provided by operations of 2.3 million. Our tax revenue is projected to be 7.1 million. Our other net operating expenses or cash outflow is 2.65 million. Our debt service is 4.6 million. As mentioned previously, our capital investments out of reserves is 1.9 million, leaving us with an ending projected cash of 2022 and of next year of 12.8 million. Next slide, please. How that compares historically over the last five years, you can see how it's trending upwards again. For 2020, 2022, we're projecting ending cash of 12.8 million, our reserve cash of 6 million and a working capital of 6.8 million. Next slide, please. Reviewing our operating budget portwide for 2022, we'll start with the airport. Next slide, please. We have projected revenues of 3.4 million. Operating expenses of 2.3 million with operating income before depreciation of 1.1 million. Depreciation expense of 967,000, leaving operating income of 168,000. For the, for Swan Town Marina, we have operating revenues of 4.1 million. Operating expenses of 3.7 million, operating income before depreciation of 442,000. Depreciation of 649,000, internet operating loss of 207,000. For the Marine Terminal, we have revenues of 5.2 million. Operating expenses of 4.6 million with operating income before depreciation of 575,000. Depreciation of 1.77 million, operating loss of 1.19 million. And for our real estate properties division, we have operating revenues of 1.6 million. Operating expenses of 1.45 million, operating income before depreciation of 164,000. Depreciation of 362,000 and operating loss of 198,000. And as you can see on the slide, our cash earn from operations is 2.3 million. Next slide, please. Just a quick comparison of how that looks compared to 2020, what we budgeted for 2021 as well as our projected 2021 numbers. Again, our 2022 revenues are forecasted or budgeted to be 14.3 million. Our expenses again, 12 million, roughly 37,000 and our income before depreciation of 2.3 million. Next slide, please. And now I'll turn it over to Rudy Rudolph, our operations director for review of the airport budget.
Afternoon Commissioners. Moving forward on the airport, we're going to talk about our strategic initiatives, budget overview, budget assumptions, our rates and fees and our outside professional services. And of course, our challenges moving forward. Next slide, please. So for our strategic initiatives, you're already familiar that we're in the middle of our airport master plan update that will continue through next year as well as the habitat conservation plan, which we hope will come to its five-year conclusion at the end of next year. As part of the airport master plan, we'll be evaluating our opportunities as a Washdott electric aircraft beta test site as well as an opportunity analysis on sustainable fuels. Both of those initiatives would be part of the master plan review. As you're also aware, I'll continue to be a representative on the the Governor's Commercial Aviation Coordinating Commission as a representative of Western Washington Regional Airport. Will be evaluating, continue to evaluate our emergency preparedness and response. And we've been working with Washdott Department of Homeland Security, Washington Military Department and number of the alphabet groups on being looking at what our role is in emergency response with the airport. We'll be looking at an aircraft hangar expansion pilot project where we'll be hoping to find a way to add on some hangers to our additional existing buildings and working through whatever those code requirements are to be, to be able to complete that project. We'll also, as part of the master plan review, looking at crosswind runway feasibility and retention review and hopefully bringing that forward to you as well. And then airport senior manager recruitment next year. Next slide, please. So operating revenues, 3.4 million, our expenses 2.3 million. Capital investment plan projected that we'll be working through is for 220,000 next year. As Matt already talked about, our income before depreciation 1.1 million and income, income after depreciation 168,000. Excellent, please. Here's a trend analysis or review from 2020, 21 budget projected in 2022 budget. Next slide, please. So our budget assumptions. New land development restricted until 2023, when the habitat conservation plan will be completed and hopefully we can start some some work on development at the airport, which we haven't been able to do for many years now. Lease rate increases at the airport, new market clean water will all be consistent with lease provisions currently in place. We're projecting 100% occupancy or hangers and building lease space. We're projecting some new project revenue at Cleanwater Center in 2022. Fuel flowage revenue will be increased with a new FBO operator on the field, bringing more aircraft and flex structure. And then anticipating airport operations slight increase over 2021, consistent with forecasts. And then we've got some additional maintenance staff costs. Next slide, please. So user rates and fees, our hangar rates increase, we're proposing a 5% increase and it's time to do our vacant land lease rate increase and we're looking at a 20%. That was last done many years ago and we've been holding on that because of the habitat conservation plan development. Next slide, please. Outside professional services are janitorial, rescue firefighting for the airshow and some miscellaneous. And let me move my picture of people out of the way here. There we go, $4,700 there. Airport engineering services for 10,000. AFIS is our wildlife management contract with the US Department of Agriculture. IT support looking at 10,800, security and alarm monitoring, a little over 8,400 for our alarm systems at Cleanwater and our new market warehouse. Our time temp, summer maintenance folks, 53,000, excuse me, 55,000. Some projected funds in there for appraisals at New Market or Cleanwater Center of 13,000. And then the big number is the airport master plan update, which is 325,000. That's fully funded by FAA. So when you take that number out, we're really looking at about 107,000 in our outside professional services. Next slide, please. Challenges, obviously our habitat conservation plan completion and implementation. We're hoping to get through that at the end of 2022 with US Fish and Wildlife completing environmental review. And then of course, we still have our COVID-19 response and economic disruption that we're dealing with. So next slide, please.
Commissioners, maybe this will be a time for see if you have any questions for Director Rudolph before we move on to Swan Town and also TJ Quant is one of the members that's having a difficult time logging onto the internet. So while you're asking questions of Director Rudolph, I might see whether we might move these slides around or perhaps I'll cover his slides.
Well, thanks Sam. Okay, I'll start with Commissioner McGregor. Do you have any questions about the slides you've seen so far? Either Rudy's slides or the slides before that.
Yes, thank you Commissioner. I just want to go back, Sam, on on slide four. I've got the right numbers here. I had a question here. Can we go back to slide four? My way forward. So on the slide four, I see under staffing, we have the merit pool increase. And my question is, how long has it been since we've had a complete review of all the staff positions? I know occasionally we'll have somebody go through and do some of them to see how they've changed, but I don't know, it's been, it seems like it's been a while since all of the staff positions were compared to a market and what's happening out in the marketplace. And I just wonder when that last happened, I I don't remember. But it may be time to start thinking about that moving forward because certainly the economic climate has changed and
Yes.
there's lots of options for people. And so anyway, I just, that that's one question I had. Do you want me to just give you the questions and then?
I can answer that one. So we do have planned in next year for a salary survey to so to do that for during 2022. So we we do have that budgeted for for next year.
Okay, then on six, slide six. Is there any funding or any number being put to the Capitol Lake? You know, funding and governance as this thing moves forward, are we anticipating? So say this thing in 2022 moves forward, are we anticipating any dollars in there for anything that might occur there?
We we did not plan on that for this coming year. We budgeted last year for our portion over the biennium to, for our portion of the funding and governance work group. And I believe, I believe that total was 60,000 and that would have covered the the biennium. So we've paid that out of this year's budget. So we don't have anything included in this coming year's budget because we would have already paid our fair share.
Slide 16, and this is a question for Rudy. Under op, I I understand the operating revenues increase of 6%. What is causing the increase of operating expenses being higher than that? Can you elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, generally it's some increased staffing costs, maintenance, the recruitment for the airport senior manager as well as maintenance costs for crack ceiling, painting, a few other things like that.
Okay. And then on slide 18, are you, Rudy, again, this is for you, are you anticipating a new FBO operator or?
We already have, we already have one who is operating under an operating agreement right now and in the process of purchase and sale of a building on the airport. So we're anticipating unless something changes that they'll be here fully in next year.
Oh, okay. And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks Commissioner, Commissioner Zeta. I hope you don't mind inviting McGregor to go first, but back to you.
That's fine. Let's see, Matt on slide nine.
Sure.
I want to thank you for including debt service here. I hope to see that reported in each of the business units on the summary pages. 4.6 million debt service to 14.35 million operating revenue. That's a 32% debt service debt revenue ratio. That is one of the highest among ports in Washington State for reference. It's good to know these things. And you probably know that we have a balloon payment coming due, a huge debt payment coming due in five years. And I want to, it sounds like you've got a, you've, you've been promoted, Matt, is that right?
That's right.
Well, congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you.
Our our finance manager Jeff Smith used to always prepare these looks like five years back and five years forward that included our debt for each unit. And I think that our recent evaluation by the outside agency encouraged us to do something like that on a regular basis. And it's useful for planning and if we're going to need to know how we're going to deal with this big balloon payment that's coming up. And if we look at slide five. There's about $5 million, $6 million here. That's being put toward some big categories. And I wonder if we could tighten our belts in some areas and look at paying down some of our debt to reduce our very high debt to income ratio and to reduce some of the stress that we have coming up in five years with this big balloon payment. I just want to put that out there as a strategic measure to consider. And finally, on slide 12. I want to thank you for reading the big numbers to us, the operating expenses. I want to thank you for reading the big numbers to us, the operating expenses. For Swan Town Marine Terminal and properties were not legible on our slide and the operating loss for the Marine Terminal was not legible on our slide. And it's worth noting that the Marine Terminal's operating loss is 1.2 million compared to a revenue of 5.1 million. And that is not accounting for debt. So I will want to know at some point in this budgeting process what our debt payments have been for the crane and for the log loaders. Those are two big ticket items. We should also be keeping track of the debt payments for the stormwater treatment facility. I understand that's usually accounted under environmental. But it is in service of the Marine Terminal. So just a heads up that I'm going to be asking about those, those debt payments. Thank you, Matt. And then Rudy, Habitat Conservation Plan, I'm sorry, I didn't notice what slide that's on. But do we have an estimate about how much that's going to cost? Are we still connected? Hello?
There we go. I didn't realize I had unmuted or muted myself. Apologies. I don't have that number right offhand, Commissioner. I can certainly get it for you.
Do you have a ballpark?
I do not. Just, I haven't looked at that for some time because it, they're such a combination of grant funding and and our contributions. I just don't have that number.
Hundreds of thousands, millions?
Well, it's certainly not millions, but I just don't have the number. I would be remiss to give you. I'm mistaken.
Okay. If we could, if we could know a little more about that, that would be nice. Thank you.
You betcha.
On page 16. You have some of these numbers in millions and some in thousands. And on page 20, you reported everything in the same units, which is great to see apples to apples. And I think it would be useful to keep everything in millions here. The capital investment plan then would be a fraction of a million. The net income would be a fraction of a million. And that way it's easy to compare apples to apples. Just a suggestion.
Noted. Thank you.
And then, and that was great on page 20. If we look at page 20, we'll see that that's exactly what you did. Yeah, that's great. Everything's in easy to compare. If we just step back one to page 19. Vacant land lease rate increased 20%. Yep, land is worth a lot more these days. Will this apply to Panatoni also if signed a lease option, but not a lease?
Now, this is, this, this is on vacant airport land, aeronautical side. And the reason that you see such a high number is because we, we had that frozen at, at the rate that it was like seven years ago. And we haven't adjusted that because of the challenges with the endangered species and our inability to lease land. Just now that it was time to adjust that and have it reflect current market rate for our airport land. That's why you're seeing such a large increase on the airport land.
Right. I think that's appropriate. It says this also applies to Newmarket and Cleanwater. So my question is, does this apply to Panatoni?
I can't address the Panatoni lease. You'd have to talk with Alan about that.
No, no, that, no, it would not. We are, we are under an option for that, which has that price already determined.
So they got a sweet deal. Okay.
I wouldn't characterize it that way. No, it's fair market.
Thank you, Commissioner Zeta. Anything else? I couldn't tell if you're all done or not for this round.
Yeah, I'll keep asking questions about that. I'm done for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so over to me. Slide five, please. Okay. So am I correct? The way I looked at this was it's 2.774 million, which is comprised of grant funds of 861 and port funds of 1,913. Is that the way you look at that?
That is correct.
Just double checking on that. Then slide six. Just a comment. I've come to the conclusion that everybody and their brother and sister should be concerned about what I call the climate crisis. So climate resilience is not strong enough. I would call that. If I may, as one commissioner, say that, you know, it should be a climate crisis response. So, you know, I hope that the Port of Olympia can do everything that it can to help ameliorate the crisis we're in. So that's a comment. So then on page, let's see. Going forward to slide 12, please. So operating income loss and you have operating income before depreciation. Then you show depreciation, then you show operating income or loss. So Matt, where does debt service appear on this? If it does, is the debt payments per division, is that showing here, business unit?
It does not. Debt service comes in under non-ops and it's only the interest expense portion of it under non-ops. The principal payment is a balance sheet item, not an income statement item.
Okay, wow. So even if you take off principal repayment, but you're talking about the interest payment, you're thinking that's non-operating. And I guess for the record, I feel like well, you should show one or the other. So either depreciation or debt service payments. And I prefer to show debt service, if you will, interest only. So, you know, that's my preference. I'm not sure, you know, I wasn't around when all the accounting for the port was formulated, but seems to me, so you're saying that interest payments on the debt is a non-operating expense. Is that the position, accounting position?
That's correct.
And is that commonplace according to GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles? If I may use an old term, or is that, you know, how the Port of Olympia does it?
That is, that is up to the standard of GAAP and it is how the port does it and has for, for many, many years.
Got it. Okay. So then turning to Rudy, I got a question for you, Rudy, on slide 15.
So I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm all out of answers for today, so.
Oh, no, I'm too late. How about sustainable fuels opportunity analysis? What are we talking about there?
Well, there, there's a number of different types of, of transitions in fueling. And one of the challenges that we run into, unlike a Sea-Tac or a Minneapolis or an Atlanta airport, where you have this economy of scale and customers that can make changes. You, at a general aviation airport, it's very difficult for us to be able to do a change that's going to have an impact. And so what we're, what we are evaluating is what are those opportunities that might present themselves? Where we can provide incentives for our fixed base operators or service providers who might help to push them in that, that direction to take the risk on some sort of a sustainable fuel initiative. So that's really what that means. And, and it just means we're going to look at all those opportunities that are out there and see what would present themselves.
Great, thank you. Then on page slide 20. So I was curious about IT support. I thought that that might fall under existing admin IT programs and so.
Well, that is, that is, that is the charge associated with the, our, this business unit. And essentially, and certainly Matt can step in and correct me. But the, the, the idea is when we have direct charges that can be attributed to a business unit, we assign them that way. And this is one of those, the IT piece that goes to the airport. So if Matt needs to address that a little bit further, feel free.
Thank you. Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate you and Sam coming back to me with those responses. Thank you. Okay, I guess we're ready to move forward because each commissioner's had a chance to ask some questions and so.
Okay, I'm going to check to see if TJ Quant has, has made it on. Are you online with us? Okay. Not hearing him.
Be glad to try and take this one if you like.
Okay, Rudy will take on and I apologize for, again, the internet just went down at Swan Town right before this meeting, so.
Sam, TJ is on, but he's on just via phone.
Okay.
He needs to be moved over to the presenter or panelist.
Oh, great. Okay.
Sheila.
Sheila, can you move TJ?
2536, last four digits.
Got it. I will move. I will move over. And TJ, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
We got you.
You can? Oh, great. Thank you so much. I apologize. I'm working a little bit brail here. I'm working remotely from home today. And my internet went down about 25 minutes before. So good, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Senior Harbor Manager TJ Quant. And I will be reviewing our operating budget, going over our strategic initiatives, including new staffing, which we have none, budget overview, budget assumptions, user rates and fees, and outside professional services and upcoming challenges for 2022. Go ahead and next slide. Some of our, our strategic initiatives for 2022 will include the Integrated Port Peninsula. This is one of our key components to next year. Will be a planning effort moving forward with the information gathered through destination waterfront and also evaluating our own internal operational needs. We're also going to be looking at our programmatic maintenance and project planning. We will continue to work with our maintenance department to develop a programmatic plan to address any future repairs and infrastructure needs at the marina and at the boatyard. And in addition to this, we will also be developing a five to 10-year plan for our upcoming capital projects and major infrastructure needs. Since the port was awarded a security grant, Homeland Security Grant, we're, we are very excited to dive into updating some of our, our technology down at the marina. This is going to include the Swan, Swan Town's broadband infrastructure and dock wifi systems, which are in pretty serious need of an upgrade. And we will be looking forward to be, to providing a better service to our customers and our tenants. We will also be updating our marina and boatworks operating software with the goal of greater operational efficiency and ease of service to our customer service, our customer base. 2021, there, there should be a new boatyard coming out, permit coming out soon. So one of the, our top priorities for 2022 is the boatyard's environmental compliance. With the new requirements, we're going to be making sure that we fall within the environmental compliance regulations defined by ecology. And one of the main items that we will need to, to do is replace our, our current washdown filtration system, which is one of the items that we have outlined on the 2022 capital project list. Additionally, at the boatyard, we, we have several repairs that we need to do to our travel lift this winter for operational and safety purposes. This will include the travel lift's front steering arms, also replacement of one of the hydraulic motors and some additional engine servicing. In 2022, we are also going to be looking to, to complete the repairs to the, the two pilings that we have on the breakwater. This is a carryover capital project from last year. But we're looking to hopefully complete it next year. We have two pilings that have been showing substantial rot at the base that will need to be addressed here in the near future. And we will be looking at targeted marketing and promotions. This will, the hope is to increase activity both at our boatyard and marina with targeted marketing, which includes new marketing videos and offering promotional deals and types more activity. Next slide. So taking a look at this, this is our, our operating revenues to expenses. As you can see, our projected operation revenues for 2022 will be 4.1 million with operating expense of 3.7 million. Both are about a 15% increase. Our Swan Town capital investment plan cost about 201,000 and with a net income before depreciating depreciation at 442,000 and a net income after depreciation of negative 207,000. Next slide. So this is a graph showing the last three or last two years with the next year's projected. As you can see, both operational costs and revenues have increased each year. And the, the margin has, contribution margin has been relatively the same over the last three years. Next slide. Looking at some of our assumptions for the budget this year. Our number one assumption is that our marina and boatyard activity will remain at a high occupancy and with limited growth opportunities at this point. That our fuel dock activity will continue to trend in with modest growth. We're seeing a little bit each year of growth at the fuel dock. That our expenses will continue to increase. Where we've seen some notable increases this year in costs are to security, insurance and maintenance, in general maintenance. And as we go into 2022, we are looking at doing some longer term planning. And with that five to 10-year business planning, we're estimating that we're going to have additional engineering costs as we start to map out the, the future of Swan Town and boatworks and the marina and upland facilities. And with that, rates will need to reflect the rising operating expense, infrastructure maintenance and the future investments that we're looking to do. Next slide. Here we have the, the recommended rate increases for 2022. At the marina, we're looking at a 6% increase to our permanent mortgage. For our guest mortgage, an increase of 25 cents a foot. And bringing our launch ramp to $10 per launch and with a 85 per year annual. And at our boatworks, haul out and launch fees at a 5% increase and laytime rates at a 5 to 10 cent increase depending on the seven days and after seven day daily rate. depending on the seven days and sent after seven day daily rate. All of these increases retain us in the mid-range of our market regionally and in some cases, the low end of our market across the Puget Sound. Next slide. This is a list of our outside professional services for the marina, boatworks and the fuel dock. Looking at our inspections, equipment services and just general outside services, we have 36,370 this year. Our IT monitoring systems, electrical fuel, fire alarm, fire extinguishers, security cameras at about 30,964. Our security contract, which this is a notably notable increase compared to last year is that our, our portion is at 100,000 and 113. Our janitorial services increasing just a little bit at 47,600. And these two next ones are for future planning costs for engineering. One of them being the integrated port peninsula planning at $25,000. And our capital project engineering plan and planning for a five, 10-year plan at about $30,000. And lastly, temp staffing and Department of Corrections crew at about 26,000. This is for our, our one staff member that assists at the fuel dock. And when we have Corrections Crew come in and, and help out on our upland landscaping areas. Next slide. Some of the, the biggest challenges that we're expecting. We're expecting continued inflationary pressure that will have impacts on our market, impacts on outside servicing costs, impacts to material, maintenance material costs and also costs on our insurance. We're also expecting that we'll still be experiencing some material shortages that could cause delays on projects and maintenance projects that we're doing along with escalated costs when dealing with these maintenance projects. We are also preparing our, that our capital projects to experience some delays due to permitting uncertainty. For example, the, the breakwater pilings that we're planning on fixing will require some specific permitting that we have seen across the state have some major delays on obtaining those permits. Another challenge, although we are very excited about the upgrades to the marina and the boatyard systems, it will require a, a great deal of coordination, training and adapting to new processes as we, we look at new software and as we upgrade the, the wifi and broadband infrastructure down at Swan Town. And one of the major issues that we've been continually dealing with at, at Swan Town is the constant continued need for heightened security measures. Vandalism and theft has been an issue throughout downtown and our staff holds the security and safety of our facilities and our, for our customers in great importance. And we expect that we will continue to be challenged as we navigate security concerns and risks daily. And lastly, the continued effect of COVID-19. We expect that, that there will continue to be adjustments that we'll be looking to navigate through as we hopefully get out of the, the pandemic. So. Next slide and.
Okay.
Looks like we have a.
Thanks TJ. Sam, is this a break for questions?
I, yes, and I just want to alert the commissioner and the, the presenters that we're about a third of the way through our slides and about halfway through, through our time. So staff is certainly available to the commissioners individually offline to answer more detailed questions. We will be keeping track of, of questions as we have, have done in the past. We certainly want to, want to answer all those and I just kind of, from a time management point of view, want to alert that to I'll make sure you're aware of that as chair and keep, keep the moving, moving per your accord. We, we can stay later if you, you would like us to. It's, it's really up to you, but I just wanted to like, we're about a third way through the slides and halfway through our time.
Well, thanks, Sam. I guess my reaction to that is well, it's important for commissioners to get their questions answered, but appreciate you advising us on the clock. And I'll ask my commissioners, including myself, to be brief in your questions, but this is a short section. So any questions of TJ at this time?
I have no questions and I don't feel the need for a break.
Thanks. Thanks, Commissioner. How about you?
I, I have a couple of questions, but I'm fine moving on as, when we get done, but they're, they're just brief, so I'll keep them brief. On page 23. If I could go back to that one. TJ talks about the heavy equipment repairs on the travel lift. Are we not maintaining that properly? I mean, there, you talked about some kind of knuckle system on the steering. Are these just operational things that should be covered in maintenance or are they big ticket items that are going to require that we need to depreciate? That's, that's my question. And do they qualify as capital repairs?
Yeah, thank you for your question. So these are not capital repairs. There's just a number of operational issues that have popped up throughout this year that we're planning on, on addressing. So some of our, what I've budgeted in for the boatyard for operating expenses is going to be a little bit higher than what it normally is to take care of these through our operating budget.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Then if you go to page 24 in our packet, it looks like what the numbers we have are nowhere close to what you have. And I think what has happened is they've been copied from another slide that shows 14 million, 14.5 million as operating revenues, but yet the slides are showing. So you just might want to change that and get it updated to more of what you're showing, just so that people aren't confused on why there's so much there yet the slides are different.
If I can address that, that was a mistake and that, so the, the, the version that you're seeing in front of you on the screen is the correct version for Swan Town. What was included in the packet was mistakenly the organization overall.
Right. Well, that's what I figured, but I'm just wondering if we shouldn't put that corrected into the packet because anybody going on to the online would see that slide and not the one that was actually being shown at today's meeting.
Thank you, and we'll, we'll, we'll update it with a revised slideshow.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could also put in the corrected slide that I had pointed out before where the big numbers didn't show up, that'd be great. Thanks for catching that, Commissioner McGregor.
Yep. So number 26, slide 26. Got a question. You, TJ, you talked about the fuel dock activity will be a modest growth and it looks like it's going from 424 projected up to 671. I don't call that modest. I'd call that a big leap. So you must have some big tankers coming in to fill up or something. I just questioned if that's realistic, so.
So what, what the, when you, you look at the fuel dock, you, you can't look at just directly the revenue to expense. What that's reflecting is the increased cost of the product that we've been selling. So last year, the, the cost of fuel was way down. On average, this year it's been much higher. So the, the estimates are based off of current rates that we're experiencing now.
Okay, so, so that just, that's like I paid almost four bucks a gallon for gas when I buy it. So this is what you're saying is that it was lower at the start or in 2021, but it's going to go up. Okay? And then in the additional engineering costs and the five to 10-year business planning, are you, are they, are you considering looking at reconfiguring of JK and Al to get longer berths in there because bigger boats seem to be the, the trend and those sit empty a good part of the year because they're small boats and people can trailer them. So just wondering, that's just a comment. So I'm just throwing that out.
It, it very well could be. The, the, the place marker that we have in there is for a number of different projects that we're looking at, everything, including doing assessments on our pavement all across the Swan Town to assessments on our docks. And yeah, it, it, it kind of runs a gambit as we go through the process of five to 10-year planning. We, we want to have accurate engineered numbers that coincide with our, our planning process.
Right. And that, but what I'm saying is that the smaller slips aren't as revenue producing as the larger slips because the boats can be taken out of the water and put on a trailer and parked. So I'm just wondering if there's, you know, just something to take a look at. The last question I think I have on this part is guest mortgage, what percent increase is that 25 cents a foot?
That's a, about a 25% increase.
So it's at a dollar now?
Yeah, we're at a dollar now. If you go into a dollar 25, which is about the, it would be market average for here, we were quite a bit lower than everybody. And then when looking at across the Puget Sound, I think the average is closer to about a dollar 38 to a dollar 40. So it would keep us lower. It, it is a nominal increase, though.
Just curious on that. Okay. I think that's it, Commissioner. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner McGargers and Zeta. So I just have, I have three questions. One is on slide 23. So when you talk about boatyard environmental compliance, I'm a little bit familiar with that retaining system after the power wash. So are you talking a total replacement of that system or bringing it up to current standards?
Yeah, so we would be looking at a total replacement of the system. The, the issue that we're having with that system is the company that we first purchased it from has drastically downsized and we're experiencing issues with them now as far as service and getting parts and the polymers that we need to, to continue with it. For example, we, we have one replacement pump that we have to, to replace the pumps on the system, you know, maybe every five to six months and they no longer have any of them. So we're, we're hoping to get through this year and then looking at possibly a reclamation system so that we are recycling the water. And looking at that, that we were also looking at other places like Everett that have just recently done this upgrade and looking at them for kind of guidance of what kind of technology that we should be using.
I see. Then the next question on slide 27. On the permanent mortgage, are you going to have a a good explanation for our mortgage? Folks mooring their boat there as to why we need a 6% increase and not more like a, say a 3% increase. It seems like a big increase in one year, but, but I hope you explain to them what that's for.
Yeah, yeah, we can put together some stuff for that. Just so you know, also, places like Seattle right now with CPI increases, they're looking at about 5.5%. I, I know there's a, a number of marinas that are experiencing higher than normal increases this year, including Anacortes is looking at 5 to 7% increases. But we, we can put together something for a, a better explanation of why.
Well, thanks. I appreciate that because I know you have a great rapport with your mortgage holders. So I'd like to see that continue. And the last question on the slide 28, next slide, is the security contract, that's a pretty hefty amount. Is that more than people driving around and pickup trucks or, you know, what, what all do we get for that? I know that you're combining that with the Marine Terminal, but if you could just address your portion of that.
Yeah, wow, we, we have an amazing couple roaming security guards that, that do everything from helping people into gate access when they, they don't, don't have their key to walking the docks, checking on boats. They also have a, they carry tablets with them with our security camera access so that they can monitor all the parking lots at the same time as doing drive-throughs. If, if you could ever see our, our, our security reports, you would see that every night they're dealing with either camping issues or people trying to do things. They, they, they are a very good couple guys that we have working through this security contract. Additionally, the, the se, security contract that we just moved to has some state-of-the-art technology called Helius, which helps map out our properties and see where the highest risk concerns are. And they, they use this, this software to help them be more efficient with their, their job. So although that seems like a very high amount and, and the increase I think was about $43,000 to the Swan Town Department over this last year, we, we really get a lot from them.
Good to hear. Thanks for that expla, explanation. Well, that takes care of the Q and A segment this time. Back to you, Sam.
Great. I think we're going to move right along. Is that okay, Commissioner? We move into the next session?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great. And we have Lynn Fosher, Marine Terminal Director up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Lynn Fosher serving as the Marine Terminal Director and happy to talk about the Marine Terminals budget for 2022. Next slide, please. So looking at our strategic initiatives and our marketing strategy of casting a wide net and building relationships with strategic partners continues, focused on the warehouse and berth one uses. We're seeing the fruit of our labors right now. As I'm sure you know, the maritime sector is currently very busy. We are encouraged by the current active shipping market and, and inquiries that we have received here over the last several months and expected upcoming activity at the Marine Terminal. We expect that to continue through 2022. For the maintenance team, we have, our maintenance team currently consists of four union workers. This year, they have seen their overtime hours go up tremendously with both dock activity and stormwater management. The team used to consist of six folks three years ago. We have not replaced either Mick or Mike. They have asked and we're supporting a new position to start at the beginning of the year to help provide for the sweeping work and train into their group over the next several years. For capital, first, we've got berth one rehabilitation. We had issues, as I'm sure the commission knows from previous discussions, we had issues with ash content when, when this dock was built, impacting the concrete pilates leading to, to potential spalling. We are seeking some of this help on that capital project through Amerad Port Infrastructure Grant. More news to come on that as we move forward. Likewise, we have terminal paving listed. This was deemed by the asset assessment as the weakest variable at the Marine Terminal and needing attention. We are also looking at Amerad Port Infrastructure Grant to help us with this. We also have the warehouse suppression system. This is a safety item. We've had some significant failings over the last years, last couple of years with a lot of alarms going off, issues and challenges with that system. So we're going to need some attention to that this year. We also have the stormwater sweeper. This was part of the WAP decree that we needed to ensure that we've got the sweeper in place. Right now, we're going to be discussing, looking forward to, to an additional sweeper to be capitalized, part of our agreements with the tenants. We also have, then we have some maintenance projects and one of the biggest is the front gate repair. This is, this gate has been failing as far as opening and closing. It's especially on some foggy days, requires some, some additional attention on the closing and, and something that, that we're concerned about. With that said, we did try to get a security grant a couple of years back and this was not deemed central on the overall port as, as in the regional port area. So we're going to have to address that through some additional maintenance this year. We've got some smaller maintenance projects as well, but that's the most significant one. And then on, on this list, master site plan, this is looking to identify the maximum utilization of assets as well as identify the capital plan to put into the next six-year plan. This is something we've talked about for the last several years and something that we want to implement in 2022. Next slide, please. So our, our finance department often talks about the elegatering. So our, our finance department often talks about the alligatoring effect of operating expenses increasing more than revenues. Here, we're trying to, uh, uh, take that on and, and you can see we've got an increase of 6% on the revenue side and increase, uh, decrease by 2% on the operating expenses, which we think is good. And what we want to do is, uh, and I'll, I'll get into how we address that through some of the different tariffs. Uh, you also see the capital investment plan that I discussed, again, a lot of that coming, uh, through grant support. So I think that number is, uh, something that gets addressed. Um, and then, uh, as well as the, the other, uh, financial numbers that are listed. Next slide, please. I think this slide again highlights that, uh, here in 2021, our projected, uh, finish is, is, uh, better than budget as far as operations, operating income before, uh, depreciation after overhead. Uh, we are projected to be above budget and, uh, we want to, uh, continue with that trend. As you can see, we're, uh, we're trying to trend up and we're gonna be taking also on, uh, stormwater within our Marine Terminal budget as part of this. Next slide, please. For some of the assumptions that we look in, we've always talked about different ship counts. Uh, so here we've got 30 ships listed for 2022, uh, 22 log vessels, five general cargo and three livestock. Um, I, I think just to give you a little bit of, of reference point where we are now, uh, we, we have already hit 20, uh, log ships and projected to, to go well above even that 2020, that 22 number, uh, listed for 2022. Uh, for, for livestock, uh, we're, we've had two already and, and, uh, third schedule, well, we've got four scheduled for this year. So we think we're conservative with three livestock, uh, vessels. And then the five general cargo vessels, uh, we've got, uh, one scheduled here soon and we are projecting to have a lot more activity on the dock, really led by what you're seeing, uh, as far as the shipping sector right now. Um, I, I would expect to have, uh, hopefully a couple, if not, that you could also turn this into one assumption that's not included in our budget is a potential, uh, is a potential for, um, uh, further labors. And that's something that we are not assuming in here, so that, that's also something we could do. So we think that's a conservative number. Uh, we do want to generate 3% growth per year, again, looking at that of trying to use dockage, and I'll get into that in a second, um, as a way to prevent that alligatoring I was mentioning before, next slide. Uh, so addressing rates and fees, um, so dockage, again, that's, uh, the vessel, uh, that's what you pay for ba- uh, for covering the dock. That's what the vessels pay for tying up or tying alongside, warfages for cargo moving across the dock. Uh, and then we, so those are the two, uh, primary rates you see as part of your tariff schedule. Um, as such, uh, our, our port has been, uh, solely increasing its rate above CPI over the last several years to make up differences in being, uh, lower in our dockage than some of the other regional ports. So we plan to aggressively dip into that differential. Uh, and then kind of how this happens or what the functionality, so remind the Commission that through the Northwest Marine Terminal Association, uh, which provides antitrust immunity, uh, for our port to discuss tariff rates with some of the other regional ports, uh, they, we make recommendations to address what the dock, what the, what all the tariff rates would be for the following year. And we, we, uh, generally have gone with, uh, what that recommendation has been or just a little above, like I said, as far as addressing the dockage differential. This past year, the recommendation was 8% floor, which was the highest it's been in years as a recommendation from Northwest Marine Terminal Association. Uh, assuming we're gonna do something similar, if not higher than that, as, uh, that, that was, uh, that's what we're kind of seeing as a trend based off of a lot of the additional costs in the region, uh, we're recommending 15% dockage, uh, to again, address that alligatoring effect. And again, looking at, uh, trying to make up that differential, uh, we are, we are lower, uh, our rates of dockage are lower than some of the other regional ports. Um, and then, uh, you see here, warfage 5%, that's what we'd expect to be the floor or any guidance of the floor provided by Northwest Marine Terminal Association. Uh, TJ's discussed security rates, uh, we continue to, we, we made some aggressive moves last year to address that when I was in front of the Commission about that contract. Um, we were expecting, uh, that rate to increase by cost by CPI and that we tried to, uh, take advantage of increasing that cost a little bit more, uh, than CPI, uh, moving it up by another hundred dollars, which would be about, uh, just under 9%. Uh, and then again, other rates, uh, recommendations by Northwest Marine Terminal Association. Next slide, please. So when you look at our outside professional services, I think of the number at the bottom just starts to give a lot of people fear, but I, I do want to address and take out a couple of different numbers. Uh, if you took out, and you might remember a couple of years ago, we moved longshore labor, uh, which is a variable based on how much that we're gonna be, how much business we have at Marine Terminal. We're, uh, uh, if you took that out, the master site plan, that 150 that we're, we're recommending and as well as the security, which we again, look to have a revenue source to offset that. Uh, the remainder items are, are about $189,000. Um, some of those items, uh, that we would touch on, we've got IT and asset management as well as some engineering e- estimates that we put forward for some of the capital projects we're looking at. And then the cost of seeking the grants and, uh, and some of the other miscellaneous costs at 114,000. Next slide, please. As with the other departments, Marine Terminal has a lot of challenges, especially around COVID. Uh, again, this is one that if we were, and we have identified it right at the beginning of, uh, the COVID, the COVID pandemic, that if that were to strike either our longshore or our maintenance departments, that could take out our entire business line. So it's a, it's a significant vulnerability that we've, we've been on top of since the beginning and really making sure that we, we take best practices. Uh, for the increasing cost, uh, this is, this is throughout a lot of the industry, I think. I, I don't think I have to go into a lot of detail what's driving it, certainly the Marine Terminal. As TJ mentioned in his department, we're seeing a lot of those cost increases, whether it be for cost of goods, other services. Uh, you name it, there's, there's certainly an increase in cost, thus why we want to make sure we're, we're taking advantage, increasing our costs on the tariff side. Uh, when it comes down to, uh, so something I, I, I'm not sure the Commission is aware of, but want to make sure you are, is ILWU, uh, coastal, which is not, not looking at our local, uh, per se, the local is part of the, the full coast. ILWU's, uh, labor contract is up to July of next year. Um, I mean, this is gonna be a challenge, I think everybody's gonna be looking at, along with what you have is the tight shipping and container markets that are, that are challenging the supply chain. Uh, I am sure that this coastal labor contract will have its own impacts, something I just wanted to make sure that, that you knew about and, and wanted to, to cite that here. Uh, another item that want to make sure you're aware of is, uh, is through the PMA, there's a regional longshore shortage. Uh, there's a lot of ships in the region coming in, typically what ends up happening is, let's say if, uh, we had, we had a busy ship schedule coming up and, uh, another, uh, in, in other longshore would travel their gangs into our area. Uh, the challenge now is that all the ports are full, so the travel gangs are not available. PMA, which is the Pacific Maritime Association, uh, that consists of, and the port, ports are not, uh, members of that. PMA consists of the shipping lines and the stevedores. Uh, they're the ones who deserve, determine the labor force associated with, uh, with each of the ports. Right now, you've got a regional shortage on, on, on workers and that's something that's, uh, certainly, uh, become a challenge as far as trying to, to make sure that Port of Olympia can maintain its, uh, its obligations to its customers. Next slide is, uh, excuse me, uh, next, uh, what bullet, bullet is uncertainties in the shipping market. Um, uh, right now, like I said, there is a lot of, uh, shortage, uh, for ships right now. Uh, we've got the supply chain issue, the container market, uh, you're seeing a lot of cargo moving into break bulk and bulk. That's the inquiries that we're getting, potential cargo we're getting. Uh, this, these uncertainties, I think, will continue through to 2022 and potentially beyond that. And then finally, and, and I don't know why necessarily this is a challenge, I look at it more of an opportunity, uh, but this is the potential to transition to renewable energy. Um, we're looking at seeing ways that we might be able to convert our Marine Terminal equipment into different types of renewable energy uses and really, uh, yeah, the challenge is, uh, trying to, to figure that out, move forward with that. But our team is certainly looking forward to taking on this challenge of being a leader in that area. With that, I open up to any questions.
Thank you, Lynn. Uh, Commissioners, uh, well, since Lynn invited us, uh, do you have any questions of Lynn Commissioners?
I only have a couple, if I might.
Okay.
And, uh, page 36. We can go to that, talks about the security rate increase, this is, in this year, didn't we change from one security company to another? And so this is an increase, uh, that we're getting from them, or is this something we're gonna be passing along to our customers?
That's a good question, Commissioner, this is what we're planning to pass on to our customers. And just to remind folks, uh, our rate increases, uh, other than environmental, come every July. Uh, this, uh, this environment, this security rate increase will be next July to our customers. We're expecting our rates to increase by CPI, so let's say 3 or 4%.
Okay, so, uh, in regards, in regards to that, then, uh, when the labor contract is finally negotiated and hopefully it's successful, it'll happen in July or at least retro to July if it goes past, past that date. Um, are our rates, uh, or in our tariff that we can go back and charge for the extra time? I mean, if it goes up 10%, can we go back and charge customers for any retroactive, uh, action of the contract?
Yes, Commissioner, we can, now we just got to make sure that we itemize that as part of our service agreement, but yes, we would.
Okay, and then as far as the labor shortage, I know that there are times when we can only get three gangs working a ship and, and because, as you said, they don't travel because they're already backlogged in their other ports. As well, is there any benefit or should something be considered that, uh, that the Commission send a letter off to PMA, uh, in support of additional registrations for our local? Because I think we're down to under 30 and, uh, I think, uh, four, four gangs is usually around 32, uh, healthy individuals. So I don't know, uh, but anyway, I, I would propose that at some point in time, maybe a letter from the Commissioners to, uh, express our, our, uh, need to have adequate work, uh, individual skilled labor in our area for handling the ships that we're getting.
Yeah, I think that, that could be very useful, Commissioner, and, uh, certainly one where I'm sure the longshore would appreciate it.
Yeah, that's my questions, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner McGregor, uh, Commissioners Zeta, any questions for Lynn?
Yes. Let's see, on slide 32, strategic initiatives. Um, capital projects, warehouse fire suppression, gotta have that, absolutely. Terminal paving, I understand that's something we do just about every year, because the heavy equipment, um, has wear and tear on the, um, on the terminal. Birth one rehabilitation, it's not clear to me why that needs to be done right now. Births two and three are, are main births, right?
Well, Commissioner, I, I would say one, two and three, uh, three are main births, uh, we have, uh, vessels scheduled going into berth one, hopefully as soon as this week.
Usually we only have one or two, one ship there, sometimes two. Um, having birth one's in pretty poor shape, birth four is, and we're not gonna bother rehabilitating birth four, right? That one needs to just be removed and cleaned up, right?
The end, that's a Commission decision, Commissioner, I, I, I think that there's, uh, some opportunity down the road if we have some grant, uh, grants to consider a birth, birth four, but I'm not talking about that as far as in this capital project. Birth one, uh, being one that we've used, we would have used if we were able to get those labors, those other possibilities of labors in the future. Uh, this is still a project that I think it has some opportunity. And as I said, we're, we're looking at, uh, potential capital, uh, excuse me, grant funding for, for that project as well and hoping that we can really get, uh, uh, some of the federal help to, to make that happen, so it's not on the ports' back.
So that's where the ferry's been docked in recent years, right?
Ferry shifted between one and two.
And, um, I think we should take another look at birth one. And I see, i- if there was any discussion here of sea level rise planning or climate change planning, I'm sorry that I missed that. But I really appreciate Commissioner Downing's emphasis that we're in a climate crisis and we need to look to the future. And rehabilitating birth one is gonna be expensive. And I'm not sure that it's money well spent since the seas are rising rapidly and the Marine Terminal is the most vulnerable real estate in Olympia. Um, whether or not we rehabilitate birth one should depend on us finishing our sea level rise adaptation, adaptation planning, working together with the city of Olympia and Lot. And that's a process that is still underway. I think we need to do more planning before we commit to rehabilitating a birth that's crumbling and that is very vulnerable to rapidly increasing sea levels.
Commissioner, I, if I remember the, uh, study that we did jointly with Lot and the city of Olympia, uh, regarding, uh, sea level rise, uh, what I had understood was, uh, the births would, uh, potentially be impacted in about 65 years at, at the highest 100-year storm and, uh, high tide combo. Uh, and, and, uh, that's what I recall from that study. What this would do would extend, uh, the life, uh, and then I think that would be when you start looking at what all the births are, uh, together and what you might want to do, uh, for, for the next level of capital projects out by that, you know, 55, 60-year, uh, viewpoint. But that's what I recall from the study, Commissioner, it's been a while since I've seen it, those are the numbers I remember.
Yeah, I, our, our assessment was incomplete and that view is optimistic, especially given recent data. So I think we need to take a closer look at this and finish our assessment. Our assessment is incomplete, birth one is very vulnerable and it's gonna be very expensive to repair. And, um, there might be better uses of those funds once we have a clearer understanding of our best responses to sea level rise. So I would encourage the Commission to, um, to hold off on this. And until we finish the current stage of sea level rise adaptation and climate mitigation planning. So I think that's, that's something the Commission needs to take another look at.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Okay, I trust we'll be discussing that in, um, the next month or so.
Thanks, Commissioner, uh, anything else?
Yes, on page 33. Um, I'd like some more information about what the annual debt service covers. I was here when we approved the purchase of two log loaders for over $2 million plus $1 million in interest. I am not sure exactly how much we spent on interest for the crane, but I think it was two or $3 million and I don't know how much we spent on interest for all the different stages of constructing and upgrading the stormwater treatment facility. It may be in the ballpark of 5 million. I appreciate my fellow Commissioners' interest in knowing how much interest we're paying, how much debt we're paying. Um, and to that end, um, we should know uh, what this annual debt service is for. And similarly on page 34, where we have the revenue, operating expenses and gross operating income. Um, in the past, we have also seen the debt payments included. And, um, we should know what the debt payments are here also. Um, I appreciate on page 36, the increase of dockage and warfage rates. Um, and thank you for the information about the labor shortage. Under challenges on slide 38. Um, I appreciate Commissioner Downing's reminder that sea level rise and climate crisis are critical issues and those hit the Marine Terminal first. Um, I think those are challenges that will I think those are challenges that belong on our challenges slide. They belong on our radar.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Lynn.
Uh, thanks, Commissioners. Just in response to Commissioner Zeta, I know that Sam mentioned we'll be talking about the capital improvement plan on October eighteenth, I believe, so. A reserve comment on birth one, I think that bears looking at, so I'll take a close look at that, and perhaps we can have further discussion on capital projects on October eighteenth. Okay. Sam, ready to move on to real estate?
Yes.
Thank you, Lynn, for that presentation.
Mr. Rowe is with, is with us and ready. There, there he is.
Ryan, Commissioner, this is Philman, the real estate director. Let's go next slide. What we've looked at really for twenty-twenty-two in our initiatives for real estate side is we've got the new market option agreement being implemented. But we also want to focus on some clean water property marketing, specifically focused on the, the large lot that's got the H building on it, with the challenges with the HCP and the protected gopher out there. We feel that's kind of a strategic property in the city of Tumwater that we should really put a focus on, being that it is entirely impervious and would not be subject to any gopher impacts. We've got support for two projects, the CRV Resort Project, along with the Marine Center Building for housing the admin portion and the Marina Office. And then really looking strategically at our entire portfolio to figure out how we can optimize it and possibly make suggestions to the Port Commission for any acquisitions or surpluses of property. Next slide. Here's a quick overview, you guys can read as far as our operating revenue expenses and capital investment projects, and then our net proceeds. One thing to note is we did not, we took a conservative approach here, and we did not account for any potential revenues coming from the new market option agreement out there. There is possibility that we'll have one approximate thirty-acre lease come online next year. But again, we want to take a conservative approach to our budget, and I did not include those figures in our reports. Next slide. I hear, just like you saw with the other business units, our path. You know, you will know it's was a fairly flat year as far as our, you know, revenues went. Again, that's because we did not account for anything in new market, which however, would not be in this budget. It falls in the airport side. And then also, you know, simply we didn't have any new leases, and all lease escalations are pretty much defined in our, in our leases. So it just happens to be how the years fall and what sort of escalations we have programmed in the lease. We have a variety of approaches based off of the length of leases that we held them for. Some are simply two percent a year, or three percent a year, ten percent every five years, or CPI adjustments. So we have a variety of increases there depending on what the leases. Next slide. As I said, we took this conservative approach. The growth is dependent on, you know, really what future opportunities we have. And we're going to, you know, focus on those direct marketing efforts, along with, you know, really looking at the, the port's revenues don't grow really at a, at a fast rate if we simply continue to do ground leases on our lands. And, you know, our, our land, we only have so much of it, especially looking outside of the airport budget down at the peninsula, and simply ground leasing those properties really don't provide the revenues for for a healthy port very long term. So we would like to look at those and see how we can just move beyond ground leases and either share in opportunities for operations, sharing those revenues. We're thinking outside of the box and playing more of a developer role in some projects on the peninsula. Next slide. Here you saw, as far as our outside services grow, same thing with the other business units at the Marina, Marina Marine Terminal. You know, our security expenses grew a bit, but you know, I, I do want to echo what both TJ and Lynn said. You know, this is a phenomenal service. If I get the daily reports, and these guys really go above and beyond in terms of what we simply pay for, and really are part of the port team versus just simply security contractors. So impressed almost on a daily basis, and I think it's an investment well made on these services. And exciting. What we're looking for as far as challenges go, as Rudy mentioned, the habitat conservation plan is, you know, just simply a barrier to, to get in development done out of New Market Campus that we'd like to see come to a close hopefully at the end of next year, and allow for some projects to move forward. You're well aware of the challenges we've had on the RV resort, but we're pretty optimistic on some of some recent meetings we've had, and hope to see that come to fruition next year. And then, again, just seeing what sort of future opportunities we have, and being able to grow within those opportunities. Excellent. So I have.
Thanks, Alan. And should we take a, keep, can we keep on rolling here, Commissioners?
I have questions. Commissioner McGregor may have questions.
I do not have any.
Okay. Zeta, what do you got?
Slide forty. New market option agreement implementation, that's Panatoni, right?
That is the holder of the new market option.
You mentioned that clean water property marketing, H building is we don't have to worry about the HCP because it's already paved. I completely agree. We are a strategic plan has three main goals. Environment. Community. And economics. And when we can do our real estate business in areas that are already paved and already have utilities, like the clean water property. We don't have to worry about running afoul of the environment. If it's already paved and already has utilities there, then that is an environmental plus. You're absolutely right about that. Panatoni is on the other end of the spectrum. You said something about surplusing properties. What do you have in mind?
I don't have anything specifically in mind. We'll do an analysis throughout the year. If there is something that makes sense, we would recommend that to the commission.
Slide forty-one. How much are, are real estate's assets worth? Ballpark figure?
I'd have to tally it up, Commissioner.
Fifty million more?
It's, it's a quite large number when you look at all the properties, keeping in mind also that our real estate is broken out between this budget and also the airport's holdings as well.
Five hundred million?
Can I interject, Commissioners? I have it somehow memorized from the balance sheet that the equity of the port is about eighty million, so. That's the, so it's got to be less than that. I just want to interject that, because the overall equity of the port is about eighty million.
It'd be useful to know, and I'm sure that our real estate manager, Mr. Rowe, has, has this number and could share it with us somewhere. Just how much our real estate assets are worth. If you could possibly share that with us, that would be useful. I'll just put that out there for next time. Let's see. On slide forty-two, I'm going to ask you the same thing that I've asked every other manager. Need to see the depth on these slides, please. On slide forty-three, you said you'd like to move beyond ground leases and play a developer role. What do you have in mind, playing a developer role? To go, the port had the opportunity to play the developer role with the brewery center in Tumwater. We didn't get that bid. It went to someone else over on Capitol Boulevard because our bid was high. And we have very little experience as a developer, so I'm wondering what you have in mind.
I think the RV project is, is a good example of this, rather than simply providing that property out for ground lease. It's, it's an operation actually on a property producing revenues, whereas you take what would be approximately two hundred and twenty thousand dollar ground lease opportunity, and you roll that into three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of, of net proceeds off of a operation within a Marina Business Unit.
That is an area where we've tried to step into kind of a developer role. On slide forty-five, however, you mentioned, if we could look there, that there are regulatory hurdles for the RV Resort. Having RVs along East Bay and the location where we proposed them is currently not allowed by Olympia's shoreline master plan, so we'll see how that works out. And in the previous slide, twenty-two professional services. You mentioned real estate commissions, twenty thousand. In the pro forma that you provided to the commissioners last summer. Kidder Matthews had a, a total of one point five seven million dollars in commission for the Panatoni lease. Is that twenty thousand part of the one point five seven million real estate commission to Kidder Matthews, or does the committer, Kidder Matthews commission show up somewhere else?
At, at what level of build-out would the, would Kidder get that size of a commission?
It was your pro forma, Mr. Rowe.
Oh, right, I know you're, you're referencing it, though I don't have it in front of me. I just forget what level of build-out that would be with that size of commission.
I, I'm referencing the one-page pro forma that you provided to us.
Okay, yeah, the, any, any commission for New Market that Kidder would be entitled to would fall under the airport budget.
Oh, so it wouldn't even show up in this real estate budget? Even though it's a real estate.
Yeah, the airport, the airport's an enterprise fund, so all transactions within the airport stay within the airport budget. As far as a, a grant assurances.
So I guess that'll be a question for the airport manager for next time as to where that Kidder Matthews Real Estate Commission shows up. Thank you.
Correct, but yeah, we didn't, we didn't also account for anything with New Market.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And also, so Alan, staying on this slide. You mentioned earlier that, that there's nothing on Panatoni in the budget, so therefore this real estate commission for twenty thousand has to be some other real estate commission outside of the New Market development.
Yeah, this is a, this is a placeholder here at twenty thousand dollars. You know, it's really dependent on what sort of turnover we could potentially have on, on some of our properties, or, you know, if, if, you know, a broker comes in, you know, with a with a deal that we do execute with them, this could be zero, this could be a much larger number. Obviously, it's just dependent on what sort of deals we exercise.
Okay, so the only real question I had is back on slide forty-one. Did you talk about is that your operating revenues being conservative, but now your operating expenses? So can you explain, if I missed it, the increase of one percent to revenue, but the increase of ten percent to operating expenses?
Yeah, some of our, our larger expenses with the increases, you know, some internal coverage for our maintenance program, bringing that in-house. Also covering those expenses along with what the distribution is on our percentage share. So we broke that out between business units. It, it just causes a bump in real estate, but it's also an accurate representation of what share real estate takes on for the maintenance obligations. The revenues again are, are flat. I, I say they're conservative, but also it's almost misspelling because again, any revenues out at New Markets would fall under Rudy's budget, even though I'm the Panatoni guy. It's, it books under Rudy's budget.
Well, so the, on the same slide, operating revenues are one point six million. And then coincidentally, ten percent of that would be a hundred and sixty thousand, which is almost what you show for net income before depreciation. So is it true that just the admin? I mean, since your job is leasing basically land and a few buildings. I mean, I'm surprised that, I'm always continually surprised that the margin is not greater in the real estate in business development division.
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously, as you're well aware of, I mean, we're, we're very revenue-heavy department. But we also have our share for G and A that comes off of that, and we do have, we do have expenses. We've got our, our coverage and maintenance expenses, along with, that's not just our, our share of, of labor side, but as well as just simply, you know, components and, and maintenance work that goes into, into our buildings to, you know, keep them in good standing.
Okay, well, I guess I could change my lens and say it's economic development, so you're providing land which provides space for businesses, which then in turn provides jobs and, and return to their community through jobs and tax revenue. So, okay, thank you. And that's all I have, and so let's keep it moving to Sam, next, next area. Thank you, Alan.
Alicia's up.
Greetings, Commissioner. I'm Alicia Alvarez. I'm your senior maintenance and facilities manager. And I'm the head of the unified maintenance department, and I think it's just important to share that this maintenance department is responsible for all maintenance outside of the terminal fence, which includes unifying and bringing together the airport, New Market, Clean Water Center, Lacy CBC Properties, the Marina, Boat Works, port equipment, roads and parking lots, the utility infrastructure of that area, the trails, landscaping and grounds, our shoreline, and our public amenities, North Point Dock and Plaza. We're also in this year looking at supporting with projects and contract oversight for projects that are pertinent to maintenance in these areas. So in the past, maintenance was embedded within each of the different business units, meaning each of those business units directly over provided oversight to their maintenance staff. And this year was a big step in bringing together all those areas, the different maintenance staff into one unified program. So in this year, it's our first year that we're actually setting up a maintenance budget separate for a unified maintenance program. I'll go to the next slide. So as I've shared before, that safety is and will remain to be our highest priority, and safety is no accident. We're engaged as a program in maintenance facility design, working with the other maintenance programs, meaning inside the terminal fence and maintenance facility needs, and this will be a big year to step into a collaborative program of planning. As I shared earlier, we are responsible for stewardship of community and public amenities and access, which is, I would say, one of our highest goals of continuing to provide access. This year in our initiatives, we're looking to drop our reliance on outside services and build the training and skills of our maintenance staff to address the maintenance needs that we have. Part of that, building those programs, is that we Part of that, building those programs, is that we have, how do we manage the the assets of what I just named earlier? We put in and into play and are continuing to build a manager plus, which is a cloud-based program. And one unique thing, I think this is an important tool, is that the being cloud-based is that we're centralizing the information around our port assets so that our crews and managers and directors can track work orders and log in and complete their jobs while across the county addressing our maintenance needs. And yes, we are engaged with climate resilience. I like the concept of climate crisis. And one of our plans is to work in providing grants to update our fleet to electric and hybrid conversion. So let's go to the next slide. Some of our budget assumptions is that this is our first year, as I shared earlier. So we're just creating a baseline in our ability to forecast and engage with each of the different business units, meaning a lot of the maintenance costs are already embedded with within their budgets that they shared. And part of that means the increased costs that they have in covering maintenance, the maintenance needs and growing the program. So as we collaborate with these business units, we're going to be creating best practices and the ability, instead of being a profit center, we're part of cost recovery. For instance, when we work with properties and being able to make sure that we track all the details, the time and materials that we put in so that can be charged back to some of our tenants. We'll be increasing our assessment of equipment and facilities, supporting our business lines and forecasting, which means I work with each of the different business units in helping them to create their budgets in their forecasting and to move towards preventative predictive maintenance costs that need to be covered. As I shared earlier, we're going to be increasing training within the department. And we'll also be increasing our inventory due to COVID. I think this is an important place that there's a shortage that we're facing and will continue to face. We have to increase our inventory in-house to be able to address, you know, day-of needs that arise. Our equipment is aging, our facilities are aging, and it's my job to work with the business units and the port director in addressing the asset management. What also in this year, I do to increasing the capacity of maintenance, we're looking to take on more of the poor planning around contracting and project management and be engaged with capital management, capital programs as well. Next slide, please. As as it's been addressed portwide, we're all dealing with uncertainty when it comes to addressing COVID and the constantly changing environment around that. And as we're restructuring, it takes time to really find a new steady state. So we're going to continue to be creative and address issues and challenges that come up in a creative manner. I would say agile manner. As shared earlier, our supply chain, it's being shared by the industry that it's not just 2022, but this is going to move potentially beyond. And this is something that we have to address within our planning, which we're going to do with the inventory and so that we can lessen our material costs. One aspect of the challenges is that we're looking to modernize maintenance. It's key. They say that like 40% of today's facility managers will retire in 2026. And so millennials are quickly taking their place. And those millennials are not going to settle for anything less than mobile-first mindset. And as we address that within our maintenance program, we also have to look that it's also a challenge for us. It's an opportunity, but a challenge that we have to upgrade our systems and ensure that our workforce can keep up with the changing equipment and I would say just the programs that we're utilizing. As we look at climate change and building resilience, we have to be energy efficient in how we make our choices and how we plan. I addressed that a little bit earlier. Same thing with increasing staff training. And I believe that TJ brought up, but it's little known and it comes through the security report. But a major part of our job at this point is to address vandalism and graffiti that is happening with our port amenities and assets. Next slide, please. That's up to you if you want to take a break.
But I'm here. You Alicia, do you have more?
I don't have more at this point. These were the the basic slides of looking to cut down some of the time with you.
Yeah, that's all pretty fascinating stuff. Thank you for your contribution at the port. Commissioners and Sam, it's now 4:30. So can we go another 15 or another 30 minutes? Commissioners comfortable with that? Okay, good. We'll try to get done here in the next 30 minutes. Everybody okay with pressing on? Good. Okay. Sam, next. G and A.
Great. So
Did you have a question? Sorry, a question for Zeta from Zeta.
I thought we were going to do questions section by section.
Okay, Zeta, go for it. Yeah, sure. Thanks.
So Alicia, thanks for that overview of maintenance. Slide 47. Maintenance facility. Last time we talked about it, there was a suggestion that this might be built on the Marine Terminal.
Not on the Marine Terminal in collaboration with the Marine Terminal and looking at what the possibilities are in sharing a maintenance facility. That that includes that includes planning that is not at my level in terms of working out requirements with the terminal staff.
So it may or may not be at the Marine Terminal.
It may or may not be at the Marine Terminal.
Yeah, I can address that.
Thank you.
Because this is my initiative. I I in early discussions with ILWU and Marine Terminal staff, as well as our maintenance staff on options for relocating this. And it it's becoming clear, just from a preliminary perspective, it's going to have to be somewhere where it's straddling the property. So part of it is on the Marine Terminal, part of it will be off the Marine Terminal. But it's way too early at this point to speculate. We're in the initial discussions phases about that.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for that, Rudy. Again, we need to integrate this with our sea level rise planning process, which is still underway because, of course, the Marine Terminal is very vulnerable to sea level rise. So I trust we'll be integrating those planning processes.
That'll all be looked at, Commissioner. And you, you guys will be completely involved in all of that.
Thanks, Rudy. Alicia, climate resilience, electric hybrid fleet conversion plan. Are you looking at a bigger fleet or replacing existing vehicles?
Replacing existing vehicles and grant right and we can take on to proceed with that.
So not a bigger fleet.
At this point, no, not a bigger fleet unless we have a need to increase our staffing, but to replace the current vehicles we have and look at options and look at options with our equipment as well.
That sounds great. So replacing existing equipment and getting grants for it all makes sense. Expanding the fleet and incurring new debt would not make sense, given our very heavy debt load at the Port of Olympia. So thanks for that reassurance, Alicia.
Okay, thank you.
Budget, let's see, slide 48. Near the bottom, increased inventory. What categories?
With increasing inventory is, you know, it's just interesting to be able to come into the quote-unquote maintenance of the port of making sure that we have fasteners. I'm going to say this is a basic inventory of having fasteners and filters that are online and being tracked professionally through our manager plus system so that we're able, we don't have to go to the store to be able to get stainless steel fasteners we have available in-house.
I totally agree with that. When I need, when I need a dozen fasteners, I usually buy a box and that'll save me a trip to the store next year. Just I was just, I'm glad for reassurance that we're not looking at buying any great big inventory like log loaders with great big debt. That's not what you have in mind, right?
The inventory I'm talking about here is the workable inventory that helps us address our maintenance work orders.
Great. Thank you.
Good. Okay, Commissioner McGregor, any questions or can we move forward? You're good. I'm good. Back to you, Sam.
Okay, you can take us to the next slide. So the operating budget for general administration includes the executive department, administrative, information technology and finance. Next slide. Our initiatives and things we're looking forward to in 2022 is the new commissioner onboarding. As you are well aware, we will have two new commissioners. We're hoping to continue to design and refine our strategic budgeting process. We've already started making some of the the shifts this year and we'll be looking to develop that five-year plan and then have an annual action plan come out of that to really make sure that that staff is aligning its efforts with the direction of the commission. As we talked about at our last meeting, that IT cyber security and infrastructure project, we have received notification that we will be receiving award for it. We're also looking forward to putting a public portal out on our website for public access to documents. These are documents that are regularly requested. We will certainly have still maintain a function of specific public records requests, but this should cut down on some of the administrative cost for maintaining. There's there's kind of normal request that we get. We have still outstanding, our list is refining the and adopting the financial measures and then planning for the Marine Center building, including the space that will be used within it for both administration and the Marina Office. And of course, everything taking place within the context of the global pandemic and the economic disruptions. Next slide. This is a pie short chart of our G and A costs. As you can see, the bulk of it is in salaries and and benefits, which is not surprising. Next slide. And then how it's allocated out, you can see it's fairly even across the four business lines, but then also some cost allocated over to the environmental program. Next slide. This is our outside professional services. We do have miscellaneous and and in general that we use for everything from a facilitator for our our retreats to, you know, smaller administrative contracts that you we use throughout the year. We are planning on having a lobbyist work with us to help develop projects and strategies for hopefully obtaining some federal and state funding for our larger projects. Our audit and accounting software costs about 71,000. Our combined IT administration and as well as our web card, web cost hosting contracts. And then again, what Commissioner McGregor asked about earlier, we do have a salary consultant consultant plan for for next year of doing that that market review that we do every couple of years. Next slide. We do have grant funding for the IT and public portal projects. We also have upcoming of retirement of administrative services director planned for in June of 2022. So we're looking to do the the planning, the succession planning to make sure that we have a smooth transition there. And then, as I mentioned, the new commissioner onboarding. Next slide. The COVID-19 response and continuing policy changes, I keep saying it is just really hard to it is hard to overestimate how much time and effort that this can can take when we in in the midst of doing everything else that that we're doing, we need to come up with new personnel policies, new procedures, et cetera. So this continues to place quite an administrative burden on the organization, one that's being faced throughout the state, the nation, and indeed the world. And then looking for continuity of operations, training and succession planning. Next slide. Okay, up that next up is communications, marketing and government affairs with Jenny Folia Jones.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Jenny Folia Jones, Communications, Marketing and Government Affairs Senior Manager. Oh, Zeta's got a question, it looks like.
Oh, Zeta, go ahead.
Are we still taking questions section by section?
We sure are. If you have questions of Sam on that last section, please go ahead.
Yes. So thanks for that overview, Sam. Slide 53, strategic initiatives. I I'm glad to see that we're planning an enhanced public portal on the website for public access to documents. That would be great. New commissioner onboarding. The WPPA, of course, provides a lot of training for new commissioners. I want to encourage the Port of Olympia to remove the Tanaka doctrine from our training process. Tanaka emphasized primary loyalty to the court. That is unconstitutional. Commissioner's primary loyalty is to the Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington. Slide 56. We do not need to spend $50,000 on a lobbyist. The Washington Public Courts Association has lobbyists and they can help us. We are already paying the WPPA. They provide great value for the money. They are professionals in a lot of different areas. They have close ties with the legislature and the community locally and statewide. And I would strongly suggest that we use their lobbyists and save $50,000. And thanks for the overview.
Thanks, Commissioner Zeta. Commissioner McGregor, anything? No? Okay, Sam, yeah, I mean, piggyback on Commissioner Zeta's comment. Tell me again what that, what we're paying a lobbyist for. I understand we used one successfully last year and that helped us get a, I believe, a $250,000 grant, planning grant for the Port Peninsula Destination Waterfront Project. But what do you have in mind for this coming year?
This is it, in particular, looking at how to line up our capital plan with the various programs that are hoping that we hope will be funded through the the federal government. We do not have a federal lobbyist or a federal lobbying presence. And so we are anticipating if the infrastructure bill is is passed, that there will be quite a bit of longer-term dollars over the 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 next 10 years. I think this is a a very reasonable amount for us to make sure that we are aligning our programs with the requirements and strategies of the various agencies. And there will be a whole host of them. It is very difficult for a staff of our size to understand all the ins and outs of what funding might be coming through the Water Resources Development Act or the Comprehensive Environment Restoration Act. We could go on and on. There is a vast complexity of how this funding will be become available, how our priorities might align with those priorities. And so if we are looking to take part in this kind of once-in-a-lifetime investment of infrastructure dollars, I certainly think it is a small investment for for us to make to be able to reap probably by by order of magnitude, several orders of magnitude to bring resources to the Port of Olympia and the citizens of Thurston County.
Well, great, Sam. So a follow-up question is, one, can you keep keep us informed as we march forward? If this is this budget is approved with the lobbyist and that keep us informed of the successes? And absolutely, you know, would you say that in 2021, you know, we benefited from our lobbyist expenditures?
And indeed, I think that was a very much a a collaboration. And indeed, I think that was a very much a cooperative effort. And I absolutely want to give Jenny Folia-Jones the very deserved credit for jumping in her first foray into government affairs and seeking resources. And we were successful our first time out. So I think that that shows that we can be strategic and we can have a good return on the amount of dollars that we spend here.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, commissioners, for your questions. And I think we can get back to Jenny now.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Next slide. And so the assumptions that we've made for this budget is that the ports hopefully will be able to be involved in the community events again this coming year. And we're hoping that we can have events. We are making the assumption that the in-person public and school tours program will also be back. We are making the assumption that we will be having centennial events to celebrate our 100th year anniversary as well as additional outreach along with that. We are also assuming that we will have our three movies at the marina events. We are changing the name for next year to Summer Nights at the Port, just to make it a little more inclusive of everything that we're doing there, more than just movies. We are making the assumption that we will also be putting together video and video photo and video projects. I know that I think TJ mentioned this, that we are going to be doing more video production for marketing efforts throughout the port as well. And then marketing for all business operations will also be taking place, communication support and material creation for all of the the port initiatives and projects that you've heard so far and that you will still hear about the rest of this presentation. And then also that state and federal budget requests, funding requests will be made. Next slide. So the initiatives, as I mentioned, it is the fourth centennial year next year. So we do plan on bringing forward a budget for you on that. And that will be coming up in a in a future presentation here. State and federal funding requests, as I said, will be on there. And I think Sam just kind of talked about that as well. New commissioner onboarding, you've heard that as well. Our department does support that. Marketing for all the business lines, digital content creation, this is something we're going to be putting more of an emphasis on. As we know, people are consuming a lot more of their information digitally. Support and material creation, again, community industry relationships and partnerships. This is something that our our department has a focus on. And then continued response to the global pandemic and economic disruption. Next slide. So as far as our outside professional services budget goes, we do cover the graphic design elements for the entire port. We also have video and photography contracts under the the port as well for all port projects here. We do have the port history book update. And we also have a marketing and communication support and miscellaneous funding, which this is something that we're anticipating will probably go towards more of the digital content creation that I've been addressing. Next slide. So as far as our challenges, internal and external communications and information overload, this is where, you know, people are receiving a lot more information digitally, but they're also receiving it a little too much right now, especially since COVID. So we are trying to work through the the challenges of how best do we deliver information to individuals? And what information are they are they really wanting and finding valuable? Digital marketing communication trends are always changing, so our staff is having to keep up with what those trends are. State and federal budget requests will be made, but again, the the outcome is going to be, you know, it is unknown at this time. We are, we have expanded our duties while prioritizing our needs here at the port. And then continued response to the global pandemic is obviously a challenge for everyone. Next slide. And that's it. You have questions? Happy to answer them.
Thanks, Jenny. I don't have any questions. Commissioner McGregor, any questions?
Not at this point, no, thank you.
Is that, was that a no? Okay, 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 that's a no. Okay, thanks, Jenny. Let's see. Moving on to the next. Go ahead, Sam.
Next up is Lisa Parks.
Oh.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm going to ask for a little grace. I'm starting week number 12 here at the Port of Olympia. So I'm jumping in with both feet to the budgeting process and I'm learning as we go. So if you ask a question and I'm unable to answer, I certainly will commit to getting back to you as soon as I can. I'm spending a lot of time with Matt and the finance folks, so I'm doing the best I can to get up to speed quickly. I'm going to cover initially the public works and the planning component of what I do, which is part of the general and administration budget. So next slide, please. So essentially, the strategic initiatives, this this business, this department actually provides a lot of support for the different business units, similar to what Jenny does with the communications and marketing. So we're helping with all of the procurement and the contracting processes for the different projects. We're also providing some project management. We're doing that a little bit differently at this point and into 2022 to try and be a little more efficient in in how we provide those different services. We'll be supporting the five-year strategic plan and the annual action plan, as well as the integrated Port Peninsula Development Plan. And then the the RV resort work, a lot of the design engineering bid preparation and permitting will be one component. We do also have an opportunity to apply for an RCO grant, assuming that the City of Olympia grants the text amendment for the RV resort. And so we will be helping coordinate and facilitate those different processes. So next slide, please. So primarily, what you see when you look at the public works and the planning budget in 085 are salaries and benefits to support project implementation across the different business units, as well as training and support for that staff. We have a new contract and grand administration person that we hope to be bringing on here in the next couple of weeks. Our candidate is a strong candidate, but does need some training. And particularly with procurement requirements, they are often changing. And so we want to ensure that we've got training and support for our staff to ensure that they've got everything they need to provide good service across the business units. Next slide, please. So the professional services component of the planning and public works budget is really a placeholder to provide technical and project management assistance as needed. Maybe there's a need for a survey for a lease project. Maybe there's a need for a engineer's estimate for a maintenance project. So this is there in order to be able to provide that particular service as it may be necessary. Next slide. And so along with all of the other challenges you've seen and pretty consistently for the public course and planning function, we are trying really hard to provide consistent service delivery across the the different business units in a rapidly changing environment, including staff changes and those types of things. So I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Lisa. That's an important area. Commissioners, we've got about seven minutes left of this work session. And we've got one more section to go through. Any questions of Lisa at this time? Looks like we're going to let you off easy, Lisa. You can breathe the sigh of relief.
I'll be back on the environmental.
Okay, sure. Okay, back to you, Sam.
Next. Okay, our non-operating budget, I'm going to turn this right over to Matt.
All right, commissioners, for the non-operating budget, we'll be reviewing the tax levy uses. Lisa just mentioned the environmental costs, the commission costs, and then within the commission and levy uses will be the special projects. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. I'm in the interest of time, I'm not going to read this whole spreadsheet, but essentially, the current budget as proposed includes the middle column for which essentially is the prior year levy amount of the 6.9 million. There is the 1% increase for this year, as well as levy increases for new construction to get to 7.136 million. I do include on the on the right-hand column, bank capacity, which is 275,000. And if we chose to pursue that, the proposed 2022 tax levy would increase to 4.7.4 million, excuse me. Next slide, please. The uses of that tax levy, you can see the 7.36 million at the top. I'm not going to read every line, but essentially, we have our debt and principal and interest of 4.6 million, environmental costs of 1.5 million. You'll notice the public amenities here, harbor patrols broken out this year. We do not have any budget items for small cities. Or and our capital or, excuse me, our special projects increased a fair amount primarily for the ballot proposition and election costs, redistricting costs and centennial event, centennial events. And the last last one are total commission expenses of 473,000, the total of which is 7.3 million. That exceeds our current budgeted tax levy. So we will explore this further in the next couple of weeks on the October 18 session. But just something to keep in mind going forward, that that bank capacity would certainly pay for these additional costs. Next slide, please. And if I, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Well, thanks, Matt. In the interest of time, judging from prior years, the tax levy and associated uses is somewhat of a lightning rod. I'm sure that'd be a, could be a 30-minute discussion. Commissioners, I suggest we table that discussion for another meeting. I certainly don't mean to avoid it, but just that it takes some time and we're pretty much out of time, so. Okay, with that, commissioners, I don't see Zeta.
I'm fine.
I'm giving a thumbs up.
Okay, thank you, Zeta. Anything else for today, Sam?
Environmental. Lisa, if you could run through that quickly.
Sure, I'll do that super quick. So strategic initiatives on the environmental front, supporting the zero emissions feasibility assessment. Looking at butt inlet remediation, trying to find some resolution, particularly in the West Bay area. Cascade Pole has a five-year sediment monitoring project that comes up in 2022 is the next one. We will be continuing to support the Capitol H to shoot the shoot estuary long-term management plan. And sea level rise and climate adaptation are vitally important to the port, as we've discussed. And then just ongoing compliance activities in terms of all of our regulatory issues. Next slide, please. So in terms of our outside professional services, we spend a lot of money on outside professional services and environmental because it is sort of, it's a very technically oriented type of topic. So in general, we've got a consistent budget from last year and and maintaining that as, again, as I become a little bit more familiar with everything that we do. But we've added a few projects in there in terms of the specific activities, zero emissions feasibility assessment is one of those. In the general category, we are going to be sharing staff with, WPPA is providing shared staff to several of the deep water ports that are having some issues with regard to in-water permitting delays because of Army Corps of Engineers and National Marine Fisheries Service conflict. So we are sharing a staff person with WPPA and several different ports. So that's incorporated into here as well. Next slide. And then just briefly on Cascade Pole specifically, monitoring and compliance is an ongoing cost and a regular cost, as is the special legal services. That's somewhat of a placeholder. The sediment sampling that I mentioned, the five-year requirement, that is about $60,000 is the budget that we're expecting for that. Next slide. And that's it on the environmental side, at least initially as an overview. And I don't know, Sam, if you want to do the the commission.
Yes. So we will have more time at our next work section to go over in in detail the commission budget as well as the the special projects. I do want to take a very brief moment, and Sheila, if you can grant me permission to share my screen. You should be good. Okay, great. So I do want, and this is a suggestion that has come from our our organizational assessment is about strategic budgeting. And so can everyone see my screen there with the tax levy budget change request form? Yes, no?
Yes, yes.
Great, great. So we will be sending this out to the commission. This is, each of you will have the opportunity to then, you know, place your name up here in this cell. You'll see what the the various levels of the 1% plus new construction or plus new and plus bank. The green cells will really be where you can give your input and and adjust these so that this number, this balance down here is either a positive number or a or or zero. And so this, I think, will help foster the the discussion when you come back together. It has been challenging sometimes in the past to have that that conversation. And so we'll have one for both the tax levy as well as changing it to the commission budget as well. And so again, then then each of you can can fill this out with your suggestion. And that we're hoping will help to facilitate the conversation when we come back together. So we will be getting these forms out to you and giving you a timeline for which to submit them back so that we can put them in a packet. And you can have them ahead of time so you can see each other's thoughts. There's also a section down in here for your reasoning and explanation for your request to change things. And we're just hoping that this gives some more deliberation to the process and gives you the opportunity to understand each other's viewpoints and ahead of the meeting. So we're not doing it all all within the confines of the meeting. So we'll be getting them.
Well, that's, okay, thanks, Sam. I'll just jump in here. I mean, you kind of a little bit read my mind in that I think that that's a fine approach. You know, the commissioners have so much to absorb and the tax levy and the commission budget are really ours to negotiate, if you will. I just want to make sure that Felicia feels like that's not out of line in any way with the OPMA because staff is doing the collating of this information.
Commissioner, I do think that it's a good idea and it's effective. What I will do is kind of sit down with Sam to talk about how the back and forth will go to make sure that we're not inadvertently violating the OPMA. But I do believe that it is something that we can do and be above board with being transparent and in compliance to the OPMA.
Well, if nothing, thank you. And if nothing else, you can collect this information and don't put it out there until it goes in the packet. So the packet can have the three different versions from each commissioner in the packet. And then therefore, it's 100% transparent.
And that was exactly the intent, is that each commissioner, and then we'd all put it in the packet, and then you'd see each other's thoughts and and priorities and then be able to have that discussion in the public session.
Okay, have we reached the end of our meeting?
I I think we we are, we have a little bit of timeline, if you can pull that a PowerPoint backup and we can just talk about our upcoming sessions and then we will call this a wrap. Because it certainly has been a lot of information. Again, I'm really thinking about this as an orientation for our first look at the budget. Understand there will be a lot more questions. We will be tracking the questions as we have in in years past, making sure that that we understand what what your question is. Get you a response and provide that to all the commissioners and make that available to the to the public as well. You go all the way towards the the end. Nope, not that one. The the, no, that the budget. When the last. Yeah. So we will be collating this. And then again, if you, if any of you would like an individual run through of the budget or you have specific questions, we are more than willing. We we stand ready to.
or you have specific questions, we are more than willing, we we stand ready to to help you sit down one on one and help you go through any particular details of the budget. So don't be shy at all about reaching out to us on that. If you go to the last few slides on that, Sheila, I just want to talk about the upcoming meetings. We lost the slideshow.
Sorry about this. Hold on.
Okay.
Can you see that?
Dark screen.
Nope, it's a dark screen.
Can you see that?
Yes, we can, and if you just go all the way to to the end.
Seventy six.
Keep going. Page forty. Keep going. I'll keep going. We'll go, we'll go there's next time, budget timeline, next one. Okay, so we will have an advisory next week at a regular meeting on the actual adoption timeline. On the eighteenth, we will have a work session where we'll have more time for the the capital budget, the commission budget and the tax levy. Then on October twenty fifth, we have the advisory on the the overall draft in the next slide. On November eighth, we have the public hearing. On November fifteenth, we have a work session for final review. If if the commission determined that that is needed, and then slated for final adoption on November twenty second. And with that, thank you for your attention. I know that was a lot of material to absorb today. And we look forward to our next meeting with you next Monday.
Thank you, Sam, and thank you, Port staff, for all those individual presentations. Good job. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I I have a comment, if I might, just oh, quickly. You know, we we drank from the fire hose today, and there's a lot to observe here, observe. And I'm wondering if on our October eighteenth work session, we shouldn't start at one thirty and really take time to go through this because I don't want to feel rushed. And there's been a lot to absorb, and I think that we should allow an extra hour for discussion. So I would I would suggest to the chair that we make it a special meeting from starting at one thirty on the eighteenth.
Thank you, Commissioner. So it's been moved to start the work session on October eighteenth at one thirty. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go. Anything else, Commissioner Zeta, anything before we close? Good. Well, thank you all, once again, for this work session today. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, see you next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.